How do you expect them to look anywhere else? I mean, honestly, do you see what I'm wearing tonight? Come on.
Hey, Patagonia, how you doing? So, yeah, as I said in the stream title, it won't be an overly chatty one, because I am supposed to be working, I am working. So, yeah, sorry if I kind of just zone out. And yeah, thank you, Skips, that was for a punky girl rock album that I worked on. I've included a link to the playlist in the video description. So it's basically a list I've made of all the stuff that I've done for work that I quite like. It's a little bit out of date now, I think, but... But, yeah, doing good. So I'm actually working on some liquid, not liquid, lo-fi DNB. So I'm just gonna take a listen to where I got up to with the existing tracks and then just work on a new one, I guess. Album's coming along really good, thanks, Skip. Yeah, really good. Okay, yeah, they're sounding pretty good. So these are all the ones that I've done to completion so far. So for anyone that's interested, when we do these library albums, this is what a typical song looks like. So, you know, we have different mix types and then kind of groups for the stems. So you end up with this times 10, 12, 15 tracks and then also five 15 and 30 second cut downs for every song as well. So you get these albums that have just got like 900 odd files on them. It's pretty crazy. That is a horrendous sound. Where is that envelope coming from? Oh, it's probably the sidechain, actually. So I think what I'm gonna do on this is I'm gonna pop these in a track stack and we'll have this be like the mid-range rees. And we'll duplicate that up and then have this one be like a just a pure sub-layer. Because that's something that I used to find myself doing was I would kind of, I'd be trying to get everything out of one plugin. Hey, have I died? Oh, I think I've died. Have I died? Am I online? I think I'm online. Guys, tell me if I'm online. I am here. Interesting. Yeah, strange. It said it was reconnecting to stuff. And also my little alibot disappeared. Anyway, as I was saying, yeah, I had a habit of trying to sort of get everything out of one bass patch. And what I was finding is that you can't do that, especially with bass. You need to kind of layer the sounds up a bit. So I think for this one, we will put emphasis on the mid-range. And maybe like the tiniest bit of... Actually, yeah, no saturation, doesn't sound good, but we'll turn this up. And maybe also bandpass filter as well could sound good. Where is that like pew coming from? Is it from this thing? Okay, yeah, that's fine. Hey, everyone, what's up, fan? How you doing? So let's get a little... Now, this chord phrase thing, where is this coming from? Reason Rack. Interesting. So what we'll do there... So with a lot of this library music, it's quite formulaic in the sense that there's a certain arrangement or structure that editors like. So in between sections, it's nice to kind of build into like a drop point or an edit point, which just kind of makes it easier for them to arrange the music. So let's do a little... I mean, I realize I could just reverse my own symbol. But, you know, that's a chumps game. Who's gonna reverse their own symbol? And then we'll put like a little bit of delay and reverb on that. Sound quite nice. Yeah, so I've seen, though. Thoughts and prayers, y'all. So I think we'll call this sidechain. Also, if you notice the countdown, it's just so I've kind of set myself a target to work towards for time. Yeah, I mean, a lot of my family are kind of, you know, asking themselves some pretty serious questions, so... I'd say move to England, but it's not much better. Everyone's kind of the same at the moment, to be honest. Let's see. I think I want like a little like a white noise crash. I mean, we've got roast dinners and fry-ups. They're pretty awesome. That's two things I definitely like about England. Definitely not the weather. Nice countryside. That could be a tiny bit longer, maybe. I like that. Although I feel like it should be... I could just turn it off afterwards. It should be unquantized. I think I like the first half of that better, so we'll just keep that. And also that needs to go into the sidechain group. Always do that. I feel like that mid-range needs a bit of movement on the filter. So we'll do LFO, cut off. Okay, and then we'll go into the old version of that with the reversed crash and then cut the piano melody and kick back into the arpeggio from the intro. Yeah, someone was telling me about that the other day. Let's do... I want to fix these live to a set length. There's a really cool thing you can do in Reason where you can actually load the plugin as a MIDI effect only. And it has all of these different tools that only process incoming MIDI data. So you've got things like strumming for guitars, things that can set the note range and choose what happens if you go inside or outside the note range. This thing, which is crazy, it's like a little modular MIDI computer where you can set up all of these different things from like note randomizers to scale correctors. Yeah, a whole bunch of stuff. It's really cool. But I'm gonna use it to fix the note lengths. Because I want it to sound kind of like a little bit chiptune-y. Because the whole thing with this is it's supposed to be like a lo-fi DNB, which I never heard of. I never knew it was a genre. So I'm gonna kind of revisit some of these sounds and just make sure that things don't sound too like pristine. You know what I mean? I think it's got to have that slightly degraded quality to it. Sounds pretty cool. I like that. And then we'll just set this to monophonic so that the notes don't overlap. And I also want to hear more of that delay because it's nice. Ah, actually didn't mean to have it over the piano. But what we'll do is when we come to the final chorus or the sort of build of the song, we can add some more percussion and then we can have the piano and the chiptune thing happening at the same time. Yeah, Dune 3 is pretty much my go-to at the minute. I do also have Phase Plant. I got the Killer Hearts, oh, sorry, Killer Hearts subscription package. Because it seems silly not to, you get so much stuff. But I haven't actually used Phase Plant yet. I remember trying it out ages ago. But I think in between Phase Plant, Serum, Vital, Dune 3, I have the legend H said, "It's very cool." I do like it. Okay, I've had an idea. Ooh, had a really good idea. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Edit point. Probably give another another bar after that, I think. I want to change this sound as well because it's a bit naff. And also the bass as well. I don't know if I like the bass. Yeah, so it's a weird genre. I can't play the references because they're all like commercial songs. But there's a... It's kind of a cross between liquid DNB with a little bit of lo-fi. I mean, I was playing, I don't know if you heard them when I started the stream. There's some other songs. I'm trying to keep them varied. Like, these ones are more like chill hop mixed with DNB. So I probably will revisit the sound choices on this to kind of make make sure that they kind of mesh together a bit better. Make sure to wake up my other laptop screen, so I'm not missing any any emails. Oh, there we go. Email back from a composer. I do a little bit of production. What do you call it? Oh, just production. Where I work with composers and stuff and, you know, sort of help them get their songs into shape. That's quite fun, interesting work. So, yeah, I think given what the other songs sound like, I will revisit some of the songs, the sounds. You probably are right, it is quite trancey. Also a bit slow. Hey, Silver, how you doing? Yeah, all good, man. Maybe it's too quick now. That's better. Didn't mean that to happen. Yeah, Polytone's cool. Really cool. I quite like it for, I'll show you just quickly, one of the things that I like about it is that it's really good at sort of analog sounding things. So you have this age controller. So by default, all the notes are in tune. And you can basically make the tuning on it really unstable. So if you kind of combine that with, you know, a nice long reverb or something and a little bit of hitch wobble. Ah, messed up. But, yeah, it's really nice. And that's even without really doing anything to it. That's just the sound of the oscillators and stuff. So what I want is like a DNB drums loops. I want like a nice kind of... Use that as a filler. Sounds quite nice. That's quite nice. So what I'm gonna do with that is when it finishes downloading, I'm gonna drop that into a quick sampler. And then we'll change it to slice and equal divisions, follow tempo. Half-speed it because... And then obviously set that to monophonic. Yeah, it's a really cool, cool little feature. I'd love it if Reason had like an auto slicing instrument where you could just chuck something in. Never, probably. I mean, I did kind of disappear from music for a long time. Now, this is something that was happening to me the other day. Don't snap flexed audio regions by the first downbeat. There we go. I need to turn that off by default because it's super annoying. Now, why has it done that? Can I reset all of the flex stuff? That's mildly annoying. Okay, hang on. Option P. Smart tempo. Set imported files. We're going to set that to off because I don't trust it. So that's TSP mom break skippy. Going to re-import that and manually time stretch it. TSP. Mom. There we go. Oh my god, come on. I think I can set the flex type to beats. There is a way you can do it. I don't know. I'm not going to get too caught up in it now. And then I don't wish it didn't have that kick in there as well. Maybe let's high past that. Oh yeah, and then for this final one, I want the piano playing at the same time as everything else. So, see how that's flowing? On the auto slicing and mimic, it's because it will slice by transients but not by equal divisions. So if you compare that to something like Simpler in Ableton Live or Sampler in Logic, where you can just chuck a loop in and say, "I want 16 slices time stretched." And that's it. MIMIC will detect all the transients and spread that across the keyboard, but there isn't a way to do it into like blocks where it all fits inside of equal divisions. So there is a way to do it and I think on my YouTube channel, I've actually put a tutorial up on how to do beat chopping by equal divisions using the Nurse Rex in Kong. So yeah, feel free to go check that out if you want to find out how to do that. Need to make this section hit a bit more. It could be that trancey thing that's throwing off. Sorry, I just want to get this down while I What have I done? That is a bit nerdy. Nice. It's quite a nice vibe. The spec, it's an M3 Max and I went for the 128GB RAM. Reason being, I just wanted to make one move that was going to last me a long time. My supervisor got the same laptop and I think we, because we want to collaborate on some stuff. Yeah, see, I read something about that. Apparently the Logic not using proper cores thing. I've heard mixed things about that. And I don't know what to believe. I mean, it might be true. I would be surprised if they didn't make their own flagship DAW work with their own flagship laptops. But I've heard that the Pros can be quicker, the Ultras can be quicker, M2s in certain situations could be quicker than an M3 Max. But yeah, I mean, I have everything loaded up on this. I can just take it with me to, you know, mum and dad's house, partner's house, whatever. And hopefully it's going to last me a long time unless Apple do something stupid and update all their software so you need like a whole new chip to use it. They'd never do that, would they? These hats are a bit shit. What's this? Oh. Yeah, I mean, even this, to be honest. I was running a project the other night and I was being really lazy. I needed to just do like a slight variation on a guitar tone. And I duplicated like four or five neural DSPs and the meter didn't change. So I'm just like, it's fine. I think, I think I'll be good on this for a while, or I hope so anyway. Do still have my old PC downstairs, which is what I used to record on, but that's a gaming machine now. Because it's a, it's got a 3070 in it, 64GB RAM. So it runs most games better than my Xbox does. So. I feel like this needs, apart from the sound choices being a bit wonky, I am going to make a Splice bridge. For anyone that uses Splice and you're not aware of this, it's a plugin that you put into your project that will basically tempo match and key match any samples that you preview, which is really cool. So if I'm looking for, let's do Liquid DNB. And we'll look for no vocals. Oh no, there you go, vocals. Female, obviously. And the key of this is C. So I want to correct to C. Nice. Why am I getting these like rap things? Dude, seriously, what is this? Right, let's get rid of the I'm sure you are. Seriously, no. Oh my god, stop. Drum and bass. Actually, no, change it on here. Otherwise it will reset my Ah, there we go. I should also be able to set by Ah, here we go. Major. Some of these are horrendous. Just stop. I'd like that if it went down so Maybe. We'll keep it on the maybe part. Thing is, it's not going to be like a leading vocal. I just want like a texture. Can I exclude whatever this shit is? Kelly Allen. Sorry, Kelly Allen. But I don't like, don't like your vocal loops. Behave. Maybe I can make that work. Let's see. There is a way. I always forget. You can actually copy the modified version and paste it in, but it's fine. It's fine. Transpose up. Now, it's not kept the timing, has it? Okay, let's try grabbing the modified version. So if we go to sounds. And then copy the modified version, paste it in. And that should be in time. The first half of that is not in the right time. Now, I don't know how to use this. So this will be my first time trying it. How? Oh god. Why does it not give me the right, the right pitch? Okay, that's not working at all. It's fine. I can, I can live with it. It is very chipmunky, but I can make it sound cool. I wonder Ah, it's probably because it's pitch shifted up in Splice, so I will form and shift it back down again. I mean, yeah, that's fine. That'll do. So let's just drown that shit in delay. Put some ducking on it so that it only comes in when the vocal stops. Some pitch wobble, some reverb. And then just the first half. Oh god, stop. I've already put a Oh, I did already put delay on it. I want a riser here as well, a little riser. I need to change that last note. It's bugging me. I think it's sounding quite nice. Put that in the sidechain group as well. Bear in mind, we're kind of just like, you know, speed writing, I guess. So for a riser, go on, what synth am I going to use? Dune 3. And if we set this to 24. Nice. So for this second half, we'll just automate in a little pitch bendy riser thing. Go to pitch bends. Oh no, don't do that. Want that to start at zero. And maybe back down at the end. Again, we'll drench this in some like delay and everything. So it sounds quite spacey. And then obviously filter that up as well. So it doesn't just like start. Or maybe we'll do a utility gain. I need to get into the habit of doing everything on region automation. Because I find when I do track, it kind of gets a little bit complicated. Why have you done that? Oh my god. Reason does have the best automation, in my opinion. I wish every DAW had Reason, Reason's automation. Why does it not go all the way to the top? Mate, there's always, always something. So Reverb on, Time Up, Delay on. Let's do quarter notes and dotted quarter notes with some feedback, some modulation. See how that sounds. Comes in too quiet. Maybe get rid of this thing. Just have it finish kind of at or near the top. It's kind of weird though, it stops at 63 and it sounds like it stops at 63. Feel like that shouldn't happen. Um, and maybe we can Okay. So let's try, I think we're still in region mode? Yes. Trust me, guys, it's gonna sound good. Oh, that's a bit too spooky. It's too spooky. Too spooky. So maybe put the mod matrix amount down to like 10 or something. And maybe also the LFO rate, take it up even higher, so it becomes almost like an overtone or something. See how that feeds into the next section. I'll fix it. Why, right. Is anyone in the chat super knowledgeable with Flex Pitch Edit? Because that's not that's not what it's, what it's playing. Like, not even close. And I want to change this last, no, I mean, the only other way I can do it is literally just just do it by hand. I don't think that's gonna work. This is so jank. I mean, it doesn't, I suppose it doesn't really matter if the effect is right, but I would like to know how to Fuck it, I'm just gonna do it like that. I don't even care. Um So then I need to get rid of these, get rid of these. I will learn how to do this properly. I need to watch some tutorials on YouTube or something. Do you need to apply changes by bouncing? You could be right, actually, that it's not, it's not going to preview. Yeah. You're right. I'll, I'll do it off-stream, but I'll re-import, um, and do it the proper way. But yes, thank you, I believe that is the problem. I mean, it sounds okay. Tiny bit of swing on the hats. Like that. Then another swell and crash. Still not sure about this, uh, that bass sound is kind of jank. I don't think I like that. Um I'm wondering if like the end doubling that piano sound out with something else, or making it a bit brighter, maybe for the last chorus, so it cuts through more. Let's try that. So duplicate, move down, and then on this one we'll just up the brightness just a tad. Maybe even run it through a tiny bit of OTT. My favourite plugin. It's the only plugin. That riser sucks, by the way. Oh no. I wonder if, um Let's see. Like a more quirky kind of lo-fi sound would work with this underlying pad. Because that's the next thing I want to do, is sort of bring everything back into that kind of like lo-fi sounding world. Uh, so we've got chord phrase and we need Uh, yeah, so copy that chord trigger over. As I said the other night, I'm still very much like finding my way around Logic, so excuse me if you see me doing things that are just completely like nonsensical. Uh, so for this, let's do Yeah, we'll do Reason. I like Reason. Or maybe actually, no. I know what I'm going to use, uh, use Dune again. Because it has something in it that I need. But I do like that square square wave sound, but we filter it out. And up the polyphony. Now, can I do that with? Um I guess I could do it with the mod wheel. Yeah, let's do it with the mod wheel. Ooh, that's nice. That's tasty. Where is my click? Fuck off. Simple mode, thank you. Now make this a bit more wobbly. Let's do another LFO. And set that to pitch fine, and maybe just have like a slow See how that sounds when other elements come in. Probably I'm going to change this little, uh arpeggio thing. It's already sounding more Oh man, Dune has been around a long, long time. Um, I had it since version one, which was early 2000s, I guess. So I'm just looking at composer email. They've accidentally deleted an email with a brief in it and they need me to resend it. I don't have it. It's fine. Um Yeah, I think early 2000s possibly, Dune, Dune 1. Yeah, so this thing is no longer working for me. So let's mute this and see if we can come up with a, a better sound. It could just be the actual sound and like all of this chromaverb, chroma glow stuff that's going on, and it just needs to be simpler and drier. Because I'll just quickly show you another track that I was working on, uh, just before lunch, that I think is a good example of the sound that I should be aiming for. Which is a lot more like pared down. Just really like basic, simple sounds. Again, I didn't know this was a genre until I saw the reference, but here we are. It is what it is. So yeah, that's the vibe that I want to aim for with this. What did I call the track I was just working on? Slow and steady. Fuck me, I thought I didn't save it. Oh. A bit of a moment there, but I just raised on my work, so I could just watch my own stream back and rebuild it. Yeah, so this thing is, it's too lush. Could also be a bit too busy as well. Oh, I don't know, that sounds kind of cool. Why is it even doing that? Why has it been so extra? Let's try using one of Reason's arpeggios. I mean, that's, sounds better. It's clashing now against the little chiptune thing. So let's where is the chiptune guy? Let's get rid of that from there, move it to the middle. And then get rid of the arpeggio from the end section. I think that would sound good. Obviously you can tweak this sound a little bit, because it's a bit dry at the minute. And then maybe that leaves room for another layer on the top. Or just reuse that first half of the vocal phrase like I do here. And then have that echo. And then have that echo. And maybe change something about this sound in the middle section, so it's like... Okay, definitely feeling these sounds a lot more than the old ones, so I'm gonna delete them, because I don't need them. Um, and then for this middle section, we join these regions together, go into automation mode, touch the pulse width. And then just kind of do something with that over time, so, oh no, don't do that. And then kind of have it just sort of melt away towards the end. Ooh, I know it sounds good. Now, I had this problem before, where I wanted to be able to drag a point close to another one, and there is a shortcut, is it Ctrl? It's not Ctrl, I thought it was, oh, there it goes, Alt. Again, just another Logic quirk, uh, and then as that thins out, I am going to turn up the wet/dry blend on like a really long reverb, and then have that kind of just... Yeah, continue on, or maybe just, uh... Dude, I just want the pointer tool, what are you doing? Yeah, I think I need to be a little closer to it when I do that, otherwise it kind of, it screws up a bit. So yeah, you get it as close as you can, start dragging, hold... No, hold, alternate, and move. There you go. Turn that block down a bit. It sounds nice, but just less of it. Ah, I've done this on track automation, it's fine though, because you can convert that, am I correct? You can, I'll do it after. But I want to reuse that little reverb swell thing, just as a, an additional detail. And then we'll do one final, longer one for the end. And then that can sort of fade out. And then... Yeah, I think that sounds cool. So there's one more thing that I wanted to do on this vocal sample. Uh, and then obviously I need to sort out my tracks as well, because I'm in a bit of a, bit of a mess. So if we go sends, new bus. Um, aux 13, yeah, aux 13, audio insert. I think we set this to 2/4, 100% wet, because it's send effect, ping pong, high feedback. Shape the repeats a bit. Cut that out, boost the mids. And then automate the send of that, so when this vocal phrase ends, it sort of like trails off into the distance. Why is my... Okay. Oh man, that is feeding back something rotten. Why? Sounds quite nice. Maybe have it come in sooner and more as well, and then I can also relax on the feedback time as well, because it's extremely long. Just because, I don't know why this thing isn't working, because I kind of wanted it to be like, I don't know, a bit more sort of nasal and mid-rangey. Ooh, minute left. Play it in time, thank you. I liked it before. Okay, nice, let's give it a final listen from the beginning, uh, and then I'm gonna see to a few final emails, and that'll be me done for the day. Oh god, oh no. Nice, alright, I think that's, uh, sounded right. Uh, nice one. Alright, I'm gonna get back to some emails and stuff, thank you for everyone that's hung around and, uh, had a little peek at me while I'm doing some music work. Definitely gonna do this more regularly, because I would not have gotten this far on this song if I was just working on my own, so it does help to have eyes on me, accountability is what it is. Uh, if you are at all interested, um, in what I do for Day Job, and especially if you're a creative, if you need any music for things like video edits, uh, podcasting, YouTube, background music, that kind of stuff, uh, then I've put a link to my playlist of music that I was playing at the start. And yeah, if anything, it's just interesting to check out, especially if you're kind of looking to get into that world yourself, or just want to know how the songs are put together. Uh, it's quite useful to be able to sort of just go through the songs and look at the stems and stuff, and just get an idea of how these things work. So, uh, yeah, nice one, thank you very much for checking in, and I'll catch you guys next time, in a bit.